I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order 6:34. If everyone could stand for the pledge. And Megan, if you could lead us? Thank you, Megan. Hey, can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Madam President?
Gina?
I move that tonight's agenda be adopted as printed and placed on file.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Oh, I think I heard Dee. Thank you. Any discussion on tonight's agenda? Seeing none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda? Oh, sorry. Is there any board member who would like a consent agenda item to be removed and acted on separately? Hey, seeing none, can I get a consent agenda motion?
Madam President?
Gina?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
I think I heard Amy. Dee? Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. We've reached our first public commentary for agenda items only. Seeing none, I know Will, you're not going up at this point, so we'll go ahead and move on to our board correspondence. I know Griffin is excused. Carl, are you aware of any?
I am not aware of any. Oh, I accept the invitation to the trunk or treat. I think we all received that. I did answer on behalf of the board that we would probably have a one-board vehicle and the central administration will also have a vehicle. So if you are available on that evening, I will resend it to you, but we'll have a couple cars lined up at the high school with Ms. Wilson. I'm sure we'll talk about it here in a few. But it's always a fun event. Great turnout.
Is it not? Am I correct that it's not the same night as the one at the library this year? Usually they're together.
It is not the same night. That is correct.
Twenty-four.
Okay. We will make sure we have it well-publicized on our social media and website.
It's on that same day?
Oh, the, yeah, the CTE.
Oh, I'm sorry. We all, yes, we also had an invite to the CTE workforce meeting that the board and the central administration received. So if you're interested, please let Jackie Lantina know that you'd or Nat, and she can respond for you if you'd like.
That's the ninth.
That was on the ninth. Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. As a team effort for the correspondence. We'll move on to our Board of Education reports. Bedford Township Government, Amy Bissell.
I have nothing new to report from last meeting.
I actually have one thing to report. I did, I did speak with Al Pryor this week after our debate last week and our approval for the addition of two SRO officers. I did talk to Al Pryor, who will be, soon be the acting township supervisor, and Al has signified that we couldn't get on the first agenda for this month, but he will get us on a future agenda, and myself and Sheriff Goodenough will, will come and present, and it sounds like there is some support. They are obviously looking, they passed their budget much like we did. So they're looking to see when they can amend their budget and make those determinations, but it sounds promising.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And Griffin is excused. Does anyone else have anything on the township park board? All right. We'll move on to our Michigan Association of School Boards. Megan?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Policy committee, again, we have to schedule our.
I did start going through the policies and breaking them down. The second policy exchange that we have is in regard to Title IX changes, which we will not take on at this time because we are under a district court injunction. So there's no point in having a discussion about something that's probably going to change or may change once it works its way through the court system, so. But I have started to go through those and organize them so that it'll be easier for our committee to look at, look at them, so. I'm guessing here, we can set a meeting up probably the first or second meeting in November.
Okay, thank you. And the Monroe County Association of Board of Education, Amy?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our superintendent's report, and it looks like you have a couple of items.
I do. The first one is actually for myself, and it is consideration to approve a superintendent contract extension. A little background to this, besides what, besides being interested in extending my stay here in the district, there has been a, an ongoing lawsuit, Bautista versus State of Michigan ORS, that has been going through the courts for several years now, and it has to do with superintendent positions, individual contracts, and like positions that have individual contracts that don't have bargaining groups. The reason it was started is because the Office of Retirement Services, which is a department of or a subsection of a department for the state of Michigan, has, has unilaterally decided that they were going to cut superintendent pensions because of the way contracts were written, and it was very unclear. Based on the statute that is currently existing, it had some language in there that was interpreted a different way than had been used previously, so. The new director several years ago decided they were going to interpret that language differently, and a number of superintendents sued. The court has, the court has now decided at the state Supreme Court level that, that they were not doing it correctly. It will be, it will be changed, but they also in their judgment, decided that there should be specific language and specific items attached to superintendent contract to ensure that it meets that standard. So this contract does have that at the bottom, indexing to other groups in the district. So beyond the extension, also has some language changes just to meet that standard, and our attorney firm, Collins and Blaha, wrote a resolution to ensure that it is understood that this was the intent of the board and included that as well. So tonight's motion would be to approve my extension with the language that's in it, and it would be for a five-year contract, which I had a five-year contract. I'm in year two and a half of it now, so it would just be an extension for that.
Okay. Can I get a motion on the table for the consideration to approve the superintendent contract extension?
Madam President?
Amy?
I move that the Bedford Public Schools Board of Education approve the attached resolution to approve the amendment to the superintendent of education and community education employment contract as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Amy. Drehorse? Any discussion on the contract extension?
Just a comment that I feel like this is a win-win. You are gonna get your pension, and we get to hang on to you for a couple more years, so. Appreciate the looking out.
Well, our, my contract, technically our contract, my contract already stated that the board would fight in court for my pension, and this would actually save us some money because we will be doing it according to the Supreme Court's ruling now, so. I think eventually the statute will have to be taken up by the legislature, but that's down the road because I think this new ruling has settled many things for a lot of people. It just gave clarity to a situation that was otherwise very vague, so. It now will, it will now, I think, clear most things for it, so. This was, that was the reason for the long resolution and for that long motion. It's not a motion that Nat and I would normally write. That is a Mr. Kava motion to be very specific for the ORS department.
All right. Any other?
Five is the law, I'm sorry. And I'll be retired in ten years, but, well, by then, so.
Megan?
I think the leadership of Dr. Schultz has been exceptional, and I'm very happy to support this measure.
Thank you. Any other? Go ahead.
I would agree. The longer we can keep Dr. Schultz here, the better. As far as I can, as far as I would say, we could stand him up against any superintendent in this state, and he would be head and shoulders above.
And we're never getting his head out of this door. And I would say from the financial side, right, I know probably community members would want to know. The extension for the contract is in the same, is in alignment with the contract renewals for the executive board that Carl leads, and with the increases, the increases that have been given out in other contracts. So I just wanted to make sure people knew this was in alignment with what we have been seeing across the board, so. All right. No other comments? This is a roll call vote. Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Amy Drehorse?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin is excused. The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, board. Appreciate it. Always happy to be able to stay longer. The second item that I have this evening is just a discussion. As you know, the district financial audit is under, underway. It's just about wrapped up now. Daniel Clark and his team will be presenting to the board as they typically do annually. They have to submit the audit by the first of February, however, our meeting, I'm sorry, the first of November. The meeting in, in November this year will be on the seventh, so they'll be technically presenting after they, after they submit it, but as a reminder that they don't, we don't approve it, we just acknowledge it, so. I have seen some preliminary numbers, and I will just say that the board will be very pleased with the audit findings, and Daniel is, will be here on the seventh of November, if that works for the board too, just go over the highlights of it.
Yeah, that works great.
Perfect. The next item I have is an older item that I'm just bringing back up. This is for digital school zone signs. We have talked about this. We have put this to bed. We're talking about it now again because we have several across the area that are broken. As a reminder, we, we own the signs themselves, and when they get taken out by drivers in the night, or snowstorms, or plows, we, we have to repair them. And in order to repair them, we have to pay the township, or I'm sorry, the county road commission to come out, as well, we have to pay them to come out and change the times for summer or for any breaks, things of that nature, so. In an attempt to make a smart decision and go with the unit that we can manage ourselves, I did rekindle a conversation with a couple different companies and vendors that we had been working with. I do have two quotes, one of which actually is under the Wayne, or the Monroe County Sheriff's quote for Troy Goodenough. Troy reached out to his vendor, and he has received a quote for adding 12 new radar signs, similar to what you see in town now. It is a, it is a cheaper quote. I'm not quite sure yet that we would be able to control those ones, though. We could do it remotely, but we still might have to have the the county do it because they already control that, that group of signs. So it is cheaper, but it might not get us exactly where we're going. And the other thing that, that include, it does not include the actual signage. We'd have to use our old, like, actual physical signs to add to the radar portion of them. So we'd have, we'd have them working then with the, with the lights, but it is different. The other quote, which I think is a, it looks like a better product, it, it has really good reviews, and it's specifically made for schools, is about twice the cost, but it would be full autonomy on our end. We would be able to control it remotely through Bluetooth or Wi-Fi. They are good-looking signs. It's the same version we sent before. They do have the four-inch blinking lights built into the actual signage. So we would still have the blinking lights along with the radar, and it'll say "school zone, slowdown." So there is grant funds available for these signs. Dr. French and Chrissy worked together and were able to carve out enough to pay for them. The one thing I did not account for in the quote was the, I was told by the road commission, they have to be breakaway bases. I understand why they do, but I didn't account for that. So it'll be a few more thousand dollars to get breakaway bases, whether it's the poles or the four-by-fours, so. We look in probably close to about $65,000 if we went with the second company. The first company's about $38,000. But again, I, I have yet to be told that we can control those because they are, they would be built into the countywide, the countywide sign where they pull the data. I like the signs themselves, but we would have to do some piecemealing to get our, our actual visual signs up with them. I personally would rather have the signs that have the built-in blinking lights that are school zone, meant for school zone. And since they're grant-funded, I believe that that's probably the way we should go if that's, the board would like me to do that. It will, unless they belong to Sourcewell or one of our other sourcing groups, we would have to do an RFP for it. But I will check, Chrissy and I can check to see if they belong to one of our, either RMC or Sourcewell or one of our different groups, but if you'd like me to go down that road, I will, I will do so. It's about, I think, a four- to six-week turnaround on getting them, so maybe by, maybe by snow season, we would be able to have them up. And I think they would go along well with our, our new, newly proposed SRO that we're authorized last week, and we talked about how important traffic enforcement is around those schools. I order, I would order 12 so that we would have two on Smith, which we don't currently have any here. We would have two on Dean, and then four on, I'm sorry, two on Monroe, two on Douglas, and then two for the Junior High School, and two for the, for Jackman Road. So we would really be covered and have working functional signs that we could, we could change, and they could be much more adaptable.
And, and so the $65,000 covers?
Yeah, I, I think the quote was for $63,000. I want to say, I was told verbally, there was about $6,000 for the breakaway posts and equipment to do it. Tom's crew would have to put those in. I mean, I, I mean, if anything we, anything we have, the, everything we have the county do, they're gonna charge us for it, so we, we might as well, if we're gonna do it, we might as well go ahead and. We have all the equipment to do that. Yes, we do. Yeah, absolutely.
What happens if it gets hit by a car?
Same thing happens now. We'd have to replace it.
Can our insurance carry that over?
Absolutely. Yeah, our insurance, our insurance will cover it. I, I don't know what the difference, the differential between a individual sign and the deductible. That's something that we'd have to, you know, weigh those options, right? And, but basically the same thing we have now.
I do have another question too. So say we all of a sudden have a snow day, and we have the cheaper signs, how long does it take the road commission to come out and change the signs then? Or a two-hour delay, and do we get charged every time they come out?
Every time they come out, we get charged.
So we'd be actually saving money in the long run?
We would, it would be a long buyback. This would be, it will save money. It will save money annually. This is more for, I think, awareness and safety versions, but I, there is a buyback, but it would probably be a twenty-year payback in terms of paying that back. But it is different. The road commission's busy. They're short-staffed like everyone else, so they did come out this week and, and fix a couple of our signs because we had them set for a wrong time. So they came out really quickly this week, but that's not always the case, so.
But, but to your point, though, Amy, I, we don't, they don't come out and change them on our delayed starts or any of that. So that get, that's, that is a difference, right?
So we would be able to do that when people are driving kids off.
We have to be within, I think, within 100 yards of it, and then you can change it using a tablet or a device of, an app of some sort.
Sure, Tom can do that.
Significantly easier.
You're gonna be out anyway.
Yeah, significantly. Yeah, might as well. Yeah, so we would, so we could do that, but we also have, it has different settings, and, and not just like what we have right now where you have to set it for, I think it's thirty minutes before and fifteen minutes after. We could set it for, we still have to follow the law, and, because there's a limited amount of time you can slow down traffic for, but if it's, if we did have days or we do different things, it's much easier to program like a bell schedule versus having a one. I mean, those are pretty antiquated, what we have right now. They physically have to come out and like get into the box and, and change it like a timer. So.
Okay.
So I will work with Chrissy and see if they do belong to any of our sourcing groups, and if not, then we'll have to do an RFP and, and get that out there. And, and perhaps we'll, maybe there are other specialty companies. This is the only company I was able to locate that specialized just in school zone stuff. Everyone else is adaptable, but you have to find the other signage. This would, they would actually make the signs, and they would be new and fresh and, and meet all the standards.
And so far, you're saying that it would be fully grant-funded?
Fully grant-funded, yes.
Okay.
And so, and it's a radar, so it'll show that the speed limit's 25, and then your speed, or?
It will show their speed, and it will say, and it changes, like, it'll be normal during normal hours, and during school zone, it would change to that school zone time with the flashing lights, and then when school zone time is out, it stops, but it will always show their speed, and it will say "school zone, slowdown."
Okay.
And it'll, like, you know, the amber color for slowdown, and, or yellow or white for normal speed. Pretty comprehensive, actually. That's why I like the built-in feature of the blinking lights, the two four-inch blinking lights versus having the, right now, we have like the eight or 10-inch canisters on top that, that are kind of hanging there in some respects.
There's not really one on Dean coming towards, like, heading west.
There is, there actually is one heading west. It's, it's on the other side of, it's on the other side of Dean, it's on the other side of Jackman.
The only one I've seen, it doesn't have lights on it then.
I actually drove it the other day and took pictures of all of them. There are signs there that have school zones. It probably does not have a blinking light, though.
It doesn't. That's the way I drive every day.
But these would actually have, every one of them would have a radar and a blinking light.
And these are solar-powered?
These are solar-powered, yes.
Oh, even better.
No, 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 no hookup.
So we don't have.
Backup battery included with them as well.
There's electric line there now, but, I mean, and where they do have that.
Yeah, no, this would be completely, these would not be connected to the grid. They would be completely solar with the backup battery. That would be included.
All right. I, do I, it looks like we have some consensus to move forward.
Okay. Then I will, I'll bring, I'll bring something back to the board with final costs, and like I said, I have a quote, but I have to add the base, the breakaway bases. And then I have to actually get a, I have to somehow get a special permit or an agreement with the county that we are gonna control them ourselves. They don't do that with anyone else right now, so. But they told me it was possible.
Okay. Okay, great.
It can happen. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, personnel items, or you?
I will. We have one item for consideration this evening. I'm sorry, Alex and Mark are both at their conferences for the fall, so I'm covering a little bit. We have one consideration today for a Michigan tenure acquisment. It's for Amanda Kluckey, and she has met the requirements for Michigan tenure, and we'd like to motion that we acknowledge her tenure status.
All right. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion?
Madam President?
Amy Bissell.
I move that the Board of Education acknowledge Michigan tenure acquired by Amanda Kluckey as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Amy Drehorse. Any? Seeing none, we will, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. We've reached our second public commentary, so Carl, you want to?
I do. I'd like to actually, before I introduce our special guest this evening, I want to talk a little bit about the state budget, which you heard me talk about several times already. This year's state budget was unique in that we did not receive a per-people foundation increase at all. We did get a discount in our required retirement rate for the district, which equated for us to be about 200 and, 200 and, I think, $40, $50 per student, minus a big decrease in state funding for 31AA, which is a, which is a state-level grant for safety, security, and mental health. Last year, the, the total pot of funding for the state was 300 million in that grant. During this year's budget, it was cut to $25 billion. Significant cuts, to the point where we would probably receive close to $25,000 in total for those funds. And that, we do use those funds for counselors and social workers and other items as well. So we did lobby hard, and there were several bills put forward by both the House and the Senate. And the, and the bill that was actually agreed upon was a little surprise for us at the end, and that was House Bill 5503, and it was for an increase of $125 million total for the pot, so now the pot would be up to $150 million, so half of what it was last year. Not perfect, by any stretch of the imagination, however, significantly better than the 25 million. And it was, I will not say that it had unilateral support, but there were many, there were many Democrats and Republicans that voted for it, and through our conversations with our local representatives, we pushed hard for this type of funding because we do use these funds, as we talked already, two different levels of safety tonight, right? Both, those funds could go toward either of those projects. And Representative Will Brock is our state representative in our area, and Representative Brock was one of the Republicans that reached across the aisle and voted yes for this. Those are not easy votes, as I'm sure he will tell you, but I will say that as a school leader, when we have our elected representatives doing what's best for kids, it makes a big difference for kids, right? And for the district as a whole, and, and I personally appreciate the work and the effort that took, that came out of Representative Brock's office. I am in constant communication with he and his assistant as liaison. Every time we go to Lansing, we meet personally. Every time that I have a question, I text, I email, constantly up there with K-12 and, K-12 alliances. I think our voices have been heard, and, and he actually reached out to me last week after this vote and said, "I hope it helps," and it will help tremendously, as we talked about tonight, so. Our liaison officers, our signage, things like that, will all come out of these types of funds, so. Makes a big difference for us, not having to pull out of general funds for things that the state otherwise could and should cover. And I think most of the Republicans wanted more. That's, that was the issue. They wanted, they wanted the full $300 million back, which I did too. That was not gonna be on the table right now. Maybe down the road, but on the, what was on the table is, was the best we were going to get, and I'm, I'm very proud of our, our rep for, for making it happen for us, so. I'd love, with that being said, Representative Brock, would you love to come up and introduce yourself, and I know you've been here before, and I see you everywhere, so I know you're a tired, busy man, but I do appreciate it on behalf of our, our students and our staff.
As I grew up learning, you can sleep with a brain, so I hope I have hopefully more time for this. Yeah, I'm Will Brock. I'm Erie, Michigan resident. And, you know, one of the things that I really want to push is, is safety. If you know me, you know I'm for economic stability and, and safety. Those are the two big issues that I really want to thrive on. Oh, should I have a?
Well, I was gonna check to make sure the mic's on. I want people to be on there.
Yeah. Here we go.
Now I'm on. All right, let me start over.
Here we go.
I'll be better this time, I promise.
Practice.
Will Brock, Erie, Michigan, state representative. We did have the vote last week on the school safety budget. It has been portrayed as something different by various groups, but the fact is that it's $125 million that was put back into the school safety budgeting. And we had a number of amendments on the floor that we tried to get through. One of them was to fund it fully. That was voted down or gavelled down, but we were able to vote on the 125 million, and so I proudly, you know, said yes. That was bipartisan by far. It was a 98 to 11 vote, so I mean, it wasn't even remotely close. But, you know, my goals in the state as a state representative is, you know, helping us economically, which has been hard the last year and a half. A lot of issues, I feel, for businesses, but, you know, the other is, is school safety and safety overall. And so I seen it as a vote for police officers, school safety. SRO, school student, or school, school resource officers are legitimate police officers, and, and so technically, we're funding police officers in our schools, and the last thing we want is to defund the safety of our school systems, and so every district in our county and will see a benefit through this bill. Across the state, every school system throughout the state will see a benefit from this bill. And I wish we could have given more back, and at least funded what you were the last year, but I'm very pleased to announce that, you know, we're part of that process, and sadly, we couldn't get it all funded back, but, but it was a busy day two Wednesdays ago in Lansing, but we're glad at least this bill was able to get through as well. Barring any questions, I didn't really come here to speak too much, but I appreciate Dr. Schultz, and congratulations on the extension. Being here, I'm glad he'll be here and stay here because we have a good relationship and a, and an open communication, so I appreciate him reaching out to me multiple times. And as he knows, in Lansing, everything cannot be supported. You know, there's a lot of differing factions in Lansing, and when you get into politics, but we try to get to a point where we can say yes, you know, especially when it's helping our district, and especially when it has to do with safety and police officers, so I'm glad to be here tonight. Thank you for the time, sir, ma'am.
Well, Representative, I hope you could tell your, your constituents that your funding and your efforts actually helped Bedford become one of the first districts anywhere in this region that will have a liaison officer in every single campus of the district full-time, so. The dollars go to work right away, and this board took action the same night that you guys voted, so we were quick on it.
You are probably the quickest, I think, and.
Timing's perfect, right?
You hope you never need a student resource officer for the bad stuff, but, but even the SRO helps with the daily activities of the school. I truly believe that, that they are, they are the eyes and ears, and they're helpful to all the children, the kids, the students that are in the school, once they build a rapport with them, to try to avoid some of these issues like we've had in other school systems sadly. So that, you know, that's the goal, and that's the thought process, and I'm sure that was probably yours as well, and it gives a lot of assurance to the parents that are sending their kids, ensuring that you will keep them safe. I mean, that's every, every parent's thought. I'm sure when they send their kids to school, and when I send mine to school, I hope they're safe. You know, we try not to worry about it too much, but sadly, it's happened around the nation. Activities in schools that are not so good for. activities in schools that are not so good for kids. But appreciate your response and your support.
Are there any other, uh, questions or comments from the board?
I would just appreciate you being here and for, and for your vote. We definitely.
You're welcome. I, I, you know, I don't have, I have a few goals, but one of my biggest goals is to be the most available state rep that we've ever had. And that's, personally, that's my goal. And I may not always vote the way people want me to or certain people want me to, but I want to be available and open, you know, for people to call me, even people that disagree that call me. I want to speak to them and talk to them and be available and open to that. So, thank you.
Well, I, I appreciate it. Right, I, I think, um, sure, we would like three hundred million, but I'll, I'll take, uh, one twenty-five. Um, because again, to that point, I was going to say the same thing, Carl. We took action that night and, um, and safety is important, uh, top priority for us. Uh, and, and also the development of relationships with law enforcement. I, I can't, um, you know, I, I can't say that enough. And, and we had a presentation last week, uh, with our summer school program. Um, and we saw pictures and we heard, you know, uh, testimony to, um, the liaison officer doing some, uh, work with the summer school kids. And what a, a great opportunity and how well they took to the lessons. And, um, I know I sat up here last Thursday and thought of about five other things that I was like, hey, Carl, if we have one in every building, maybe we can do this, this, or this, right? And it, it is, they're there for safety because that's important, but also just changing the way that, that, um, young people view law enforcement and, and the opportunity to share some of the programs outside of our usual, you know, dare and safety town and things like that. So I appreciate it. I know it, um, it's tough to be in your, uh, your shoes, but um, you did, uh, vote to put, uh, students first and, and I appreciate that.
Well, thank you, thank you. Changing that perspective.
Love it.
That's a.
Huge.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very, very much.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we will, uh, move on to our announcements and I think we have just one person, Danielle.
Thank you. Danielle Wilson, Assistant Principal at Bedford High School. Um, since we're showing some love to our SROs, like shout out to Deputy Lustock. We love him at the high school. He is invaluable to us. Shout out to Deputy Bills because if Jeremy's not available, he always makes himself available to us, so we appreciate both of them. Um, so DRE and JRE, they have no new updates to share with us, um, since last week, which is understandable. Um, MRE, they wanted me to share that they kicked off their Mrs. Field School fundraiser on Tuesday. Orders are due October fifteenth. Um, they said we have a great month coming up. October fourteenth through the eighteenth is the PTO book fair. On the sixteenth, we are doing Donuts with Grown Ups and shopping at the book fair before school. On the eighteenth, we will have our annual VIP Day. This will bring over two hundred and fifty guests to our school, uh, to do STEM activities with their children. And finally, their PTO trunk or treat will be on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth. And then they said they will need a long winter's nap to recover from this busy month. Uh, Bedford Junior High School, they said that some eighth graders participated with the MISD Manufacturing Day Field Trip with Mrs. O'Neal today. The sixth graders are going to the zoo tomorrow. And the junior high school used Infinite Campus new features to collect permission slips, forms and payments. Um, the secondary intervention team met to plan for our third quarter intervention pilot and their school fundraiser is currently going on. Um, Bedford High School, like Dr. Schultz was sharing, so trunk or treat is October twenty-third. It will be in the bus depot between the junior high and the high school. And that will be from five-thirty to six-thirty PM. Um, and then I have some really promising grade and AP data to share with you guys. So last year we had a failure rate that was less than four percent for both semesters. Five plus years ago, so if we're thinking kind of like pre-COVID times, we were typically at just under six percent. So we're two percent lower than what we were averaging before. So that's really awesome. Our, our teachers are doing a lot of good work. Um, last year we had two hundred and ninety-eight students, which is over thirty percent of our students in an AP course. This is the highest percentage that we can document. On top of more students taking AP courses, more students and a higher percentage earned a three or higher on their AP exams. A three or higher is generally considered passing the exam and is the benchmark that we track. Last year, we had seventy-three point nine percent of AP students earn a three or greater on their tests. The previous high was sixty-six percent. So pretty big increase for us. In short, more students are taking more rigorous coursework. More students are passing these difficult exams unless students are failing. So we're really proud of our teachers and the work that they're doing with our students. And that's it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Just thank you. Thank you for being here. Appreciate that.
Yes, of course. Thank you for having us.
All right, we'll move on to our, our executive members sitting at the table and Chrissy.
I have nothing further to add tonight.
We just, yeah, I was going to say.
Hers is coming.
Yeah, right. You know, take a break. We, we'll be hearing from you a lot here, so. All right, thank you. Uh, Tom?
Um, just one thing that I, as I mentioned last week, I attended a conference this weekend, uh, was very well attended by most of the, uh, facilities directors throughout the state. So I mingled with a lot of them, learned, uh, quite a few things from a lot of number of classes that I went to and, uh, it was very informative. And I brought back a lot of material with me, if anybody's curious.
Can't wait. Go ahead, Dr. Schultz.
I would just like to thank the board once again for my contract extension. Um, I've stated many times, I have no interest in going anywhere else. Um, I don't want to work for ten more years, Dee, but as long as I do, I, I want to be here in Bedford, so I'm very appreciative of the support, um, not only you give myself, but for the students. Otherwise, I would not be here for, if not for that. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. We're going to start on this side and Megan.
Um, just a couple of things. Um, Carl, we're very happy to have the contract extension. Um, and then just, it was just made public that Bedford Public Schools has officially, um, support, is supporting the varsity lacrosse program. And lacrosse is very near and dear to my heart, so I'm really excited about that addition. And then lastly, um, absentee ballots are out in Bedford Township, so I encourage everyone to, um, vote either absentee or in person.
All right, thanks, Megan. Amy?
Again, Carl, congratulations on your extension and we're thrilled to have you for as long as you're willing to stay. Um, and, or as long as we can make you stay. And I am looking forward to the school board leadership conference at the end of the month. Uh, can't believe it's that close already. Um, it's always invigorating and, uh, mingling with people outside of our district, you get a real sense of just how blessed we are here. So I'm looking forward to that and all the learning that comes with it.
All right, thank you, Amy. Amy Bissell?
I noticed we didn't say anything about the junior high PTO, so I'm going to throw that out there real quick. They just got done with their welcome back party and it was an absolute riot. The kids were crazy and fun. Um, they just got a thousand dollar check from the Lambertville Veterinaries Clinic. They sponsored thirty students through the BJHS PTO. So shout out to them. Thank you for that. Thank you for all the parents that also volunteered at the welcome back party. We know it was crazy. And, uh, congratulations, Carl. I'm glad that you'll be able to, um, capture all of that on your retirement when you do decide in like ten years or so. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Amy. Gina?
Um, I mean, I can just echo what everybody said. Happy to have you aboard for another five years at least, Carl. Um, and then also I just really want to thank everybody up here sitting at this table for their continued commitment to student safety and achievement. Both are equally important. I think that we're really on the right track in terms of safety and even just the new school zone signs are just going to be an added layer. So I'm really excited about that. Um, hopefully the township is able to, um, find some money to be able to support us in that. But, um, if they don't, I know that we will move full steam ahead on that.
Thanks, Gina. Dee? Yeah.
I already have to turn this off. Sorry. I always forget. I'm loud enough without it. Um, at least that's what my children say and my husband. Um, I want to thank Carl for everything that he has done and will continue to do. I want to wish Chrissy good luck with the audit. And I understand why you didn't have anything to say. You're probably tired. That's it. That's really it. Have a good weekend. Go Blue. There was something else, but, you know, it left my mind. So.
Next, I have.
Seventy-three, what are you? Oh, I know what it was. I want to thank Amy, Amy Dee, for going to all these conferences and stuff and bringing back the information. You know, none of us do that. I want to thank you because that does take a lot of time. And I appreciate it because you bring back great information. So that's it. Thank you for bringing us up to speed and I've already voted, so, on my absentee, so.
Awesome. Thanks, Dee.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good evening. Nice. Make your goodie vote.
Sure. Um, so I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, I love all, I, I apologize because I'm all stuffy up here, but all the Bedford swag we have going on up here. So I, yeah, I mean, it looks great. I love, uh, love seeing it. So, um, thank you guys for, for doing that. Uh, I, I also wanted to just step back to yesterday, um, was, uh, was Custodians Day. And of course, that's near and dear to my heart. Um, and one of the things I always, and I've said this in other board meetings before, but I always told my kids, the two people you want to befriend in the high school, in the junior high, in the elementary upon entry is the custodian and the food service workers. Because the custodians, oh, they have the keys to everything. And I can tell you how many times our kids forgot backpacks and they're at the door like trying to get in, right? And, and, uh, and the custodian would see their face and be like, ah, you again, right? So, um, they, I'm telling you, they just do a fantastic job and great work and, um, and, you know, you see them, they're, you know, they're, they're present in the building, you see them. So I do want to give a shout out to them because I, I do feel like they are the, they are some of the folks you want to get very close name, uh, first name basis with. Um, and then I will tell you, some students, I, um, my brother who is a custodian, um, he has young, you know, th- you know, third graders who want to job shadow him and see the stuff that he does. And he has some things that, um, some really funny, good stories and always getting pictures drawn for him. And I know all the custodians do. Um, I know several of them, uh, on a first name basis and, um, just seeing how the students, uh, appreciate the fact that they're there helping and supporting them. So, um, shout out to them for yesterday. Um, and that, and I'll end with, Gina, you, um, you said it very well and I'll echo that. I want to thank the board for their continued, um, support and focus on students, focus on safety and focus on the future of the district. Um, and just the votes we've had in the last week with last week's votes, the consideration for the signs, um, SRO, um, the support of, of Carl's contract. This board, um, is showing that they, um, understand students, they understand safety and they understand how, uh, to get work done and, and how to continue uh, with the great work that, that has already, uh, been done. So, um, thank you. I don't want that to, um, uh, go unrecognized. So appreciate all your work today, as always. Um, and I think Dr. Schultz, you had something else?
With all the kudos to the board, we probably should give you a day off. Um, uh, last week, we were, we were going to discuss last week on the agenda that October twenty-fourth, we have a committee of the home meeting scheduled. And we were going to cancel it for a couple of reasons. One, we have gotten a lot of things accomplished in the last month. Uh, but two, I know that we have some conferences coming up for board members and travels for personal reasons. Um, so with that being said, we took it off the agenda last week, but after this week, I think we are probably going to have to cancel the October twenty-fourth committee of the home meeting if it doesn't break your hearts. Um, it is a very, very light agenda. We do have some nice recognitions and donations coming, um, from the community to the board. Um, however, I think we're going to be really close to a quorum and I think it makes the most sense to roll that over to the November seventh meeting, which will also be the audit presentation. So that'll be a, a nice meeting to attend. So if, without any questions or concerns, I can have a net post that on the website that we will have to cancel that meeting. We'll meet our statutory requirement with our meeting tonight, so we'll be in great shape.
All right, I don't see any, uh.
No tears?
No tears, so. All right, with that being said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Gina. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Amy Bissell. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Seven nineteen.